Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodin War's Pradium on T. Colorado. The acronym is AIPAC. I am the Chief Cazi over the Consular Court, Chief Judge. Uh, today, I'd love to talk to you about more things as it relates to the same subject matter. What's the same subject matter? How did the Moors lose the E State? And how do we get the E State back? So keep in mind, today is Class Twelve, Class Twelve. What did we learn in Class Eleven? We learned a lot about George Washington. What's so important about George Washington? Well, first things first, we learned from Noble Dwyer Lee that we will keep the Europeans around long enough for the Europeans to teach us government. So we learned a lot from George Washington as it relates to when he was creating the Constitution for the United States of America in the year seventeen eighty-nine. Alright, so what did we learn from that from George Washington? George Washington, not only did the Continental Congress dissolve their previous government, which was the Continental Congress, and the Constitution was called Articles of Confederation. George Washington was the general at that time. So therefore, he was very familiarized with that Constitution. But once he was appointed as President, President what? The United States of America, they decided to create a brand-new Constitution. So they dissolved the previous Constitution that was only in existence for eight years. Why did they dissolve it? Well, number one, they wanted to create a new government. And that is the point. Moors want to create a government. So by them wanting to create a government, how do you do that? It starts with a Constitution. George Washington taught us, all you have to do is scribe a Constitution. And that brings your nationals back into the constitutional fold of government. A Constitution is a birth of a nation. So therefore, what else did we learn? We learned that George Washington could not make a unallowed decision just to create a Constitution without the permission of a Moroccan government accepting his petition to change the name on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. So the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-six was scribed by Habou, Articles of Confederation in Morocco. So in the year seventeen eighty-nine, George Washington puts on the record a brand-new Constitution, United States of America. He's petitioning C.D. Muhammad to please allow him to change the name on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship to United States of America. Alright, that must be known. Why is that important? Because Moors need to understand that we can scribe a Constitution as well. Why? Because we have the sovereignty of the land, we have the nationality as Moors. And also because of Article Fifteen of Treaty of eighteen eighty, says that we can establish the rules of a government here in northwest of Mexico. So Noble Dwyer Lee was correct. Study the Europeans, because the Europeans studied Moors. And now that we're having a reawakening, a restoration, a repair, and the name was called repatriation. What is repatriation? Repatriation means that now you're coming back to your nationality. What is the antonym or the opposite of repatriation? Expatriation. So now the Moors' expatriation status of being denationalized is now having a repatriation of coming back to your nationality. And not just your nationality, but coming back now to the constitutional fold of government. Moors have to learn now to check the boxes, create a state. Because under international law, you must have a state in order to enforce treaties. You can't be self-appointed, nothing. So today, we'll talk about the Sundry Free Moors of South Carolina. Moors who were on the record in the year seventeen eighty-nine, seventeen ninety, how did they utilize government to their advantage? We'll talk about that today. So I've got George Washington up on the, on the screen. Why is that? Because you must always recognize that George Washington had Moors who were representing him. He also had Moors that were against him. You must understand that George Washington and the colonists were dealing with a lot during that time. Yes, were they thinking about how to get their independence? Yes. What were they thinking about? They wanted to get away from Great Britain and the Parliament. You must understand, there was also in a treaty with France and Spain. So they, so therefore, the United States wanted to get their sovereignty, independency away from Great Britain, France, Spain, and guess who else? Moors. You see, when someone wants sovereignty, someone wants independence, they don't want anybody else telling them what to do. So therefore, George Washington, along with Moors who were representing him, was showing him how to get himself from underneath any other sovereign. That must be known. You always got sellout Moors, coentel Moors. You got conversal Moors, along with you got Moors who tried to enforce treaties. George Washington recognized he didn't really have independence because he was now bound to a treaty and Moors had control over that treaty. Who else was he bound to? France. France during his time was the consul on behalf of both nations. France was representing the Moors, as well as he was representing the United States as the referee. So George Washington wanted to have to deal with France, Spain. Keep in mind, Spain was in Florida. Keep in mind, France was coming on the rear of the thirteen colonies by coming down Lake Michigan, coming into the Mississippi River. So France is at their rear. Spain is in Florida, to their south. Who's up north? Great Britain. And who's coming from the front? Basically, Moors, as well as Moors were already in a territory because what? Definition of American is what? Eighteen twenty-eight, Noah Webster's dictionary. Moors were found here by the Europeans. They were already in their own regencies, their own dominion of Morocco. So you must put things in proper context. What's happening with the colonists? They wanted independence by any means necessary. But the problem is this. A, they signed treaties, they turn around and breach. And two, if they really wanted their independence, they had to go back home. Or either stick to their obligations of the treaties. And they have not done that since seventeen eighty-nine. We'll talk about that today, alright? So let's get right into a subject matter, the Sundry Free Moors. Why are we gonna talk about the Sundry Free Moors today? This is a document that a lot of Moors like to use as a reference point. But Moors have missed the bigger point about this document. As Tajree Bay says, we must think on multiple levels. What's really going on with the Sundry Free Moors here? Most Moors say, "South Carolina didn't have jurisdiction over Moors." Moors, Moors are not a part of jurisdiction of the states. Yeah, that's true. But what else was happening? We'll talk about that today. So let's get right to it. So this is a document, most Moors are familiar with, with this red borders. It's called the State Records of South Carolina, which is on the South Carolina's House Resolutions. This is one of their documents, alright? So we'll go ahead and read this document so we can start understanding government. What is my point today? We must start understanding government. We must also understand, what does international law say about Moors as it relates to the ICJ? There's what? Three classifications. Moors' subjects, Moors' proteges, and Moors' nationals. We're talking about that today under Sundry Free Moors. Watch this. So if I can have the mothers go ahead and read the title and, and uh, State of Records of South Carolina, and then we'll jump down to a petition, okay, mother?
The State Records of South Carolina. A petition was presented to the House from Sundry Free Moors, subjects of the Emperor of Morocco and residents in this state, praying that in case they should commit any fault amenable to be brought to justice, that they, as subjects to a prince in alliance with the United States of America, may be tried under the same laws as the citizens of this, of this state would be liable to be tried and not under the Negro Act, which was received and read.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Let's go back and comprehend. What are we reading? Moors must learn how to read and comprehend, start now, now starting to extract what they're talking about. We must start looking for the government of the words, the government, not the word "Moors" anymore. We must look for anything that relates to government. Watch this. "A petition was presented to the House from Sundry Free Moors." What did we learn immediately? That those Moors, the Sundry Free Moors, were petitioning who? A government. Watch this. "Subjects of the Emperor of Morocco." Immediately right then and there, stop. They were subjects of the Emperor of Morocco. They were cognizant that they have protections of a government. A state. And residents of this state. So let's start beginning. "A petition was presented to the House from the Sundry Free Moors, subjects of the Emperor of Morocco and residents in this state." So they was residing in the state of South Carolina, with understanding the state of South Carolina is in the land of Morocco. Okay, it's an overlay. However, C.D. Muhammad gave them permission of the thirteen colonies. So right now, they're talking about South Carolina, which was a republic at the time. They were de jour. Keep in mind, the timeframe, seventeen eighty-nine. This is the same timeframe that George Washington was writing letters to C.D. Muhammad. So the treaty had only been signed three years prior. Everybody's familiar with the treaty. So what was the Sundry Free Moors doing? They were praying that in case they should commit any fault amenable to be brought to justice, that they, as subjects to a prince, alliance with the United States of America. See, the Sundry Free Moors, Moors were aware of the treaty. They're talking alliance. What's alliance? They're talking treaty. Treaties are alliances. You must understand what's happening. They're trying to enforce the treaty. They're trying to petition another government, because they're claiming they have a government, because they're aware of the treaty. Continue with the reading. "May be tried under the same laws as the citizens of the state would be liable to be tried and not under the Negro Act." So let's start all over. Let's, let's make it clean. "A petition was presented to the House from the Sundry Free Moors, subjects of the Emperor of Morocco and residents in this state, praying that in case they should commit any fault amenable to be brought to justice, that they, as subjects to a prince, in alliance with the United States of America, may be tried under the same laws as the citizens of this state would be liable to be tried and not under the Negro Act, which was received and read." So what are they talking about? The Sundry Free Moors knew that the South Carolina's Constitution could not be repugnant to the Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the United States of America, Article Six says what? Treaties supreme of the land. Plus, the Sundry Free Moors know, they knew at the time that the United States of America was only in existence because of their emperor, C.D. Muhammad. So all this is fresh. They're using the treaty to their advantage and telling South Carolina, "You have obligations." What am I talking about right now? I'm talking government. Moors want to be the petition, United States of America as Moors. Guess what? During this time, the Sundry Free Moors were represented by a government. They were Moors' nationals, even though they had the title of subject. They were Moors' nationals asking for protections from their own government. The only reason why they were petitioning the United States of America, because at the time, as you'll learn, they got sold out into slavery, so they were in a position where they had no choice but to petition, petition South Carolina's government. We'll learn about that. But if Moors were to now petition anything or make a demand, then the Moors must have their own government to stand behind as protections. We'll learn about that. Watch this. "The humble petitions of Francis, Daniel Hammond, and Samuel Free Moors." So when you see Free Moors, what do I mean? Moors' nationals. "In behalf of themselves and their wives Fatima Flora, Sarah, and Clarinda, humbly shawah that your petitioners, some years past, had the misfortune while fighting in the defense of their country." Stop. I just remembered I was supposed to have the mother reading that part. Go ahead, mothers. Please start from the word "humble."
"The humble petition of Francis, Daniel, Hammond, and Samuel, quote-unquote, Free Moors."
So stop. So when you see parentheses, just say "Free Moors."
Free Moors.
Don't say "quote-unquote," okay?
Okay.
Let's start from the beginning.
"The humble petition of Francis, Daniel, Hammond, and Samuel, Free Moors, in behalf of themselves and their wives Fatima, Flora, Sarah, and Clarinda, humbly shawah."
Sheweth.
Sheweth. "That your petitioners, some years past, had the misfortune while fighting in the defense of their country, to be captured with their wives and made prisoners of war by one of the kings of Africa. That a certain Captain Clark had them delivered to him on a promise that they should be redeemed by the Emperor, the Emperor Moroccan Ambassador, then residing in England, in order to have them returned to their own country instead of what he brought them to the state and sold them for slaves. Since that period, they have, by the greatest industry, been enabled to purchase their freedom from their respective masters. And now pray it, your honorable House, that as free-born subjects of a prince, now in alliance with these United States, that they may not be considered as a subject to a law of this state, now enforced, called the Negro Law."
Stop. Okay, let's go back and comprehend what we just read. "The humble petition of Francis, Daniel, Hammond, and Samuel Free Moors, Moors' nationals." Petitioning what? For their government to come to their rescue, but at the same time, they're enforcing a treaty on South Carolina. "In behalf of themselves and their wives Fatima, Flora, Sarah, and Clarinda, humbly shawah." Is it shawah? Sheweth. Sheweth.
That's how they said "sheweth."
Oh, sheweth. Okay, sheweth. Thank you, mother. "Humbly sheweth that your petitioners, some years past, had the misfortune while fighting in defense of their country, their state, their country." So they're coming from a state government. They have protections. The United States of America knows this. But what happened? "To be captured with their wives and made prisoners of war by one of the kings of Africa, that a certain Captain Clark had them delivered to him on a promise that they should be redeemed by the Emperor Moroccan Ambassador, they were residing in England, in order to have them returned to their own country." But what's happening? The Sundry Free Moors were expecting for everyone that's affiliated with the treaty to stick to the treaty. But what part of the treaty they talking about, they had expectation, because they were supposed to be returned? Sounds like the United States of America knew this. Sundry Free Moors knew it. There were some promises made. What are they talking about? Let's take a look at the treaty. Treaty of seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven, Article Three. "If either the party shall be at war with any nation, whatever, and take a prize belonging to that nation, and there shall be found on board subjects or effects belonging to either the parties, the subjects shall be set at liberty and in effect returned to the owners. And if any goods belong to any nation with whom either the party shall be at war, shall be loaded on vessels belonging to the other party, they shall pass free and unmolested, without any attempt being made to take or detain them." So the Sundry Free Moors already knew, according to the treaty, they were not supposed to be detained, they're supposed to go home. There were some empty promises made. So this colonist, Captain Clark, didn't keep the promise. Let's continue reading. Let's start from "that a certain Captain Clark, that a certain Captain Clark had them delivered to him on a promise that they should be redeemed by the Emperor Moroccan Ambassador, they're residing in England, in order to have them returned to their own country." Stop. There's an ambassador involved with this. What does that mean? That's government. Moors must understand that this is a, this is a document about government, not just the word "Moors." The Moors utilizing, Sundry Free Moors are using government for their protections as being nationals of their state and using the treaties as their defense. Continue the reading. "Instead of which, he brought them to this state, he brought them to South Carolina, and sold them for slaves. Since that period, they have, by greatest industry, been enabled to purchase their freedom from their respective masters. And now pray it, your honorable House, that a free-born subjects of a prince, now in alliance with the United States, that they may not be considered as subjects to a law of this state, now enforced, called a Negro Law." What's happening? You ever remember that movie called Twelve Years a Slave?
Never saw it.
So, so in the movie, Twelve Years a Slave, you had a Free Mor that was a violinist. He was educated, had a family, he was not a slave. What happened? Some colonists, such as Captain Clark, fooled him, sold him into slavery. And for twelve years, the Free Mor, i.e. the Moors' national, was trying to petition anybody who came around him, anybody came on the slave plantation, he'd look around him, try to get notes, pass notes. He was petitioning for someone to come to his rescue and take that note over to some government that could assist him. But he was in a predicament where he couldn't leave the plantation. So he's petitioning all the time for help. That's exactly what's happening with the Sundry Free Moors. They were sold into slavery, slavery, illegal, illegally. Now, when I say slavery, that's connotative. But Moors should understand what that means by now. So therefore, now they finally got their petition being heard by who? A government, the state of South Carolina, the republic. And the Republic of South Carolina is taking a look at this through what lens?
Treaties.
Let's continue. "But if they should unfortunately be guilty of any crime or misdemeanor against the laws of the land, that they may have a just trial by a lawful jury, and your petitioners, as in duty bound, will ever pray order that it be referred to a committee. The following gentlemen were accordingly appointed, Mr. Justice Grimkey, General Pickney, and Mr. Edward Rutledge." What's happening? You must understand, we're talking government. That petition's going over to who? People who are elected officials of South Carolina. They're not self-appointed, nothing. Sundry Free Moors are dealing with people who are elected officials or appointed by elected officials of the House of Representatives. Moors must start understanding, we must be a government in order to deal with a government. Yes, United States of America is de facto. Yes. But de facto nonetheless. But the Moors right now are also de facto. Why? Because we're self-appointed people claiming to have governments. The United States of America, at this time in twenty-first century, is claiming to have government. Two parties that are de facto. Don't get me wrong, AIPAC has a de jour state. We had elections, Constitution, seal of the flag. We are de jour. We're poised with full powers according to international law. But the United States of America is still de facto. Moors must understand, you need a state to be de jour. You can't be self-appointed, nothing, because the United States of America was a republic, was not self-appointed. And even on a de facto status, they're not self-appointed. Let's continue. "Mr. Edward Rutledge reported from the committee to whom was referred to petition, the Free Moors, when she read in his place that, and afterwards delivered it, excuse me, delivered it in, at the clerk's table, where it was again read for information, ordered that it be taken into a needy consideration, which being read through was agreed to, and as follows, vice, report that they have considered the same and are in opinion that no law this state, what state? South Carolina, can in its construction or operation apply to them." Who's the "them"? Sundry Free Moors. "And that the persons who were subjects of the Emperor Morocco being free in this state are not triable by the law for better ordering and governing of Negroes and other slaves, resolve this house do agree with the report." But what's happening here? South Carolina realized they didn't have jurisdiction over the Moors. Are you catching? They're talking about different classifications? They said the Sundry Free Moors are Moors' nationals. They recognize South Carolina did not have jurisdiction over them. But they also classified two more statuses, Negro and slave. The United States of America recognizes classification. That's why they created what's called the caste system. What are they talking about? They're talking about status. Tajree Bay talks about status all the time. He tells people all the time, "It's not racism, it's your status." You must have a nationality. But now the Moors are coming back into the consciousness of nationality, your status is still incorrect. Why do I say that? Okay. Status. Definition of status. Black Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition. What does status mean? If we have the mothers read it, we read it before. Let's be redundant. Mother?
Status. Standing state or condition. Uh, case law, the legal relation of individual to rest, to the rest of the community. Case law, the rights, duties, capacities, and incapacities which determine a person to a given class.
Stop. So therefore, Moors' status is still wrong. What do I mean? Let me explain. Status. What is status? Status is everything. Status is your nationality. Status is Constitution. Status is seal. Status is flag. Status is legend. Status is inauguration. Status is birth record. Status is oath and allegiance. Status is state. Status is your face. Status is your nationality card. Everything is status. But as it relates to international law, you can have your nationality, but you must now check the boxes in order to fulfill the status of statehood. Watch this. Status. Standing. Standing on what? Your Constitution. Creates what? The state. The state. Or conditions. So your state creates the conditions. Conditions of what? The legal relations of individuals to rest of the community. What community? Moors' nationals in your state. As well as, as well as what other community? Other nations around the world. Your international community. What else? Creates the state of condition. It says, "Your condition of the state creates what?" Rights. State creates duties. State creates capacities. State creates incapacities, which determine a person or people to a given class. So Sundry Free Moors, what happened? South Carolina's looking at three statuses for these Moors. They said, "These are Moors' nationals according to the treaty, because they're claiming what?" Their government. They're using the right words and they have the right documentation to support them, because they have the treaties, and they're talking about an ambassador. But they also mentioned two other classifications, Negro and slave. Let's go back and take a look at it. Right here is underscored, Negroes and Slaves. So first thing they said is, "No law of this state in its construction or operation apply to Moors' nationals." But their state statutes apply to who? Negroes and slaves. Moors gotta understand, start reading these documents from a government perspective. Tajree Bay says, "We must think on multiple levels." That is the truth. We must start thinking like a government. If you only read this document looking for South Carolina to have jurisdiction over Moore, you missed it. We already know, that's supposed to be known. That's elementary thinking. How do you enforce the fact that South Carolina couldn't have jurisdiction? Treaty. What about the treaty? The treaty is backed up by a government. If Moors don't have government, they can't enforce the treaty, which means they automatically, according to Sundry Free Moors, you fall under Negro and other slave status. Status is everything. Alright. Another thing I want to point out. This is George Washington's letter to C.D. Muhammad. And the Sundry Free Moors' letter. Why does South Carolina, at that time, appear to be looking at this from a lens dealing with the Sundry Free Moors? What were they looking at? The treaty. Why? The treaty was so new, everybody was familiar with it. Yeah, remember, that changed over from the Articles of Confederation to the United States of America. All your elected officials are perfectly aware of the new law of the land. Don't keep, don't keep in mind, though, they've always known about the treaties. Always. But watch this. Look at what George Washington talks about. Why couldn't South Carolina harm the Sundry Free Moors? Let's be specific. What does George Washington say? We have the mothers read from "we greatly."
"We greatly regret that the hostile disposi-"
Disposition.
Disposition of those regencies towards the-"
Disposition of those regencies towards this nation who have never injured them. Is not to be removed or turned in our power to comply with.
Stop. Watch this, we greatly regret that the hostile dispositions of those regencies towards this nation. Who have never injured them, so George Washington said he's never injured Moors. Cause he knows he's not allowed to injure Moors, why? Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty six. George Washington's writing this in seventeen eighty nine. He has to keep up the illusion that he's not harming Moors. So therefore, the Sunday Free Moors are petitioning in what year? Seventeen eighty nine, seventeen ninety, same time George Washington looking for C. Muhammad to accept the new constitution and good faith. South Carolina's aware of this. South Car- South Carolina's like, man, we messing around with some Moors. If this word gets back to the emperor, he might not accept this new United States of America constitution if he finds out we're not maintaining the treaty. So the Sunday Free Moors at the right time of petitioning South Carolina, because South Carolina also recognizes, not only do they have a treaty. But they have just changed into a new government. And they have obligations to George Washington as well to get this rectified. What el- what else are we learning? George Washington says what? On terms in our power to comply with, comply to what, what are the terms? Okay, here are the terms right here, right how the mother drop down? And read from this sentence right here, the encouragement.
The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously. To give to our commerce with your dominion. The punctuality with which you have caused the treaty with us to be observed.
Stop. George Washington knows he has an obligation to the treaty. And he knows that it must be observed, it's an obligation. So the Sunday Free Moors are coming around the right time to petition using that treaty. But the most important part is, they have a government. Moors must understand, Sunday Free Moors didn't get off this because they have Moors. They got off the hook dealing with South Carolina because they had a government representing them and they were using the treaty. The two were synonymous together, you must use them together, the treaty and the state. Your rights comes through the state. Not just through you as an individual, you can't be self-appointed anything, you have, must do all your powers through the state. Cause that creates your condition, your capacities and incapacities. Alright. So hope, hopefully everybody learned a little something about the Sunday Free Moors in terms of reading, it's a very short read. But it's packed full of things that relates to government. Moors must start looking at documents from a government perspective and not just simply looking for the word Moore. It's Moors government. Alright, let's go on to another document. The next document we'll take a look at is. Was called. Resolution seventy five. A lot of Moors have used this document in the past. Why? Cause we felt as though. When I say we, meaning me as well, in the past, until we learn how to really start reading and comprehending these documents. We recognize looking back now, we made a vital flaw, a critical error. In comprehending this document, why? Cause we didn't read it. We went down to specific lines that were favorable to us and we just hung our feds on one or two sentences. Without reading the entire document and understanding exactly what was taking place. So I'm gonna break down this document today. Sentence by sentence. First things first, we must look at the, the timeline. Timeline is nineteen thirty three. What's happening in nineteen thirty three? Dwight E. Eisenhower has just bankrupted the United States, another shell company. They've removed all the gold from the land of Morocco, sitting on the Fleet Street, London. They've usurped their own United States citizens. And had already been stealing from the Moors. But they finally brought it full circle. That the United States of America, not to confuse the United States two corporations. That what they just created was what's called a coroner's report. They undermined their own status, they had no more money. They was on a hundred percent Federal Reserve notes, private commercial paper, totally rogue at that time. Alright, so let's get into this. This is called the General Assembly of Pennsylvania. So if I can have the mothers read that first line, the General Assembly of Pennsylvania.
The General Assembly of Pennsylvania.
Stop. What's wrong with that first line? Answer. Pennsylvania. What happened in eighteen seventy one? Eighteen seventy one, yeah, the Act of Congress. What happened eighteen seventy one? Let's take out the reference point. Act of, Act of Congress eighteen seventy one. The United States of America dissolved itself and created a new government called the United States of the District of Columbia. So as a reference point, I have one of the mothers read it really quickly, which is called, let's get the title right, reference point. So the mother can read the top title.
Forty first Congress.
Session three.
Oh, session three, chapter sixty one, sixty two, eighteen seventy one.
Okay, now we'll scroll on down, chapter sixty two. If I can have the mother read it from chapter sixty two.
Chapter sixty two, an act to provide a government for the District of Columbia. By enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled. That all that part of the territory of the United States included within the limits of the District of Columbia. Be. And the same is hereby created into a government by the name of District of Columbia. By which name it is hereby constituted a body corporate for municipal purpose. And may contract and be contracted with sue and be sued, plead and be pleaded. Have a seal and exercise all other's powers of a municipal corporation. Not inconsistent with the constitution and laws of the United States and the provisions of this act.
Thank you, mother. So what happened eighteen seventy one? They dissolved the United States of America and created a new government called the United States. Municipal Corporation. Municipal Corporation. But what did they do effectively? Watch this. This is their constitution, Constitution of the United States. Okay, so what did they do? This is their constitution of the United States, Article four. We're going down to Article four, section four, which is their obligations to their own constitution. Let's read it. Article four. Now one of the mothers read section four.
Section four, the United States shall guarantee to every state in the union, a republican form of government. And shall protect each of them against invasion. And on application of the legislator or of the executive. When the legislator cannot be convened.
Convened.
Convened against domestic violence.
Oh. Let's fully comprehend what Article four. Section four is talking about, what are they talking about? Section four, the United States, should say the United States of America, cause you gotta understand, they went back and changed these documents. But let's stick with the United States in a strict sense. Section four, Article four, section four, the United States shall. Guarantee, shall ain't guaranteed, there's no workaround. To every state in this union, a republican form of government. Was a republican form of government for the people, by the people, it's not a corporation. And shall protect each of them against invasion. And on application of the legislator. Article four, section four protects the United States of America even from its own legislators. Of what? Or of the executive, when the legislators cannot be convened against domestic violence. So this protection from the legislator, House Representative, the Senator, who else? Executive, see the word executive? Who's the executive? President of the United States. The President, House Representatives, Northern Senators, all three branches of government cannot do anything. But guarantee republican form of government. Against what? Domestic violence. What is violence? Violate, they violated their own constitution. How? Eighteen seventy one. Remember now, seventeen eighty nine is when they brought the United States of America constitution into full force. Seventeen eighty eight, eighty eight is the year that they fully ratified, seventeen eighty nine, they come in and they open up the government, seventeen eighty nine. By eighteen seventy one. They violated Article four, section four of their own constitution. Why am I bringing that up? Let's go back. Resolution number seventy five. Pennsylvania is in all capital letters, represents a corporation in N's letters. So as soon as you read the first sentence, this is how Moors have to start looking at it from a government pers- perspective. Soon you see Pennsylvania. Any enactments they've had since eighteen seventy one are called void ad hici. Why? Cause they're not operating under a republic anymore. Pennsylvania right then, all capital letters, represents the municipal corporation. What does that mean, what am I saying? Ah, now you must study international law, Moors, you must study government. What happened in nineteen sixty nine? Vienna Convention, right? Which is a treaty of all treaties, it governs all treaties, so in the treaty. Watch, watch this, I'm gonna make it make sense to you. So in the Vienna Convention of the laws and treaties done in Vienna. Nineteen sixty nine. If you go down to Article two. Where does it say about third state? Yeah, the mothers read Article two, section eight.
Third state means a state, not a party to the treaty.
Wait a minute. Moors must understand. That after the year eighteen seventy one. When they breached their own constitution and created municipalities instead of republic. They immediately became a third state, what do I mean? See, they're a de facto state nonetheless. But they're a third state as it relates to Morocco, why do I say that? Because they're no longer a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, because they're a corporation and no longer a republic. They're considered under international law, a third state and not a party to the treaty. Because they have bridged their own constitution. That was guaranteed a republican form of government. Watch this, so what does that mean about Pennsylvania, watch this. Pennsylvania was a corporation. Not a republic no more. They were not authorized to talk to no Moors. They're a third state, third party interloper. So Moors have to start looking at this on a, from a lens of a government perspective, who's the parties? The parties must be known. So all fifty states. In the twenty first century, ever since eighteen seventy one, now we're in the year twenty twenty one, guess what? All your states in all caps, according to international law. Are third states, which means they're not a party to the treaty. Moors must start to comprehend this. It's not the Moors hyperbole saying that. They by their own legislation, where's the proof? Act of Congress eighteen seventy one, their own legislation. Created a municipal corporation. It's called a reference point, it's qualified. They are no longer a de jour republic, they are de facto corporation. That must be known, but what else must be known? We all know they're corporation, what does it mean if the Moors have a de jour state? They're the only people that can, that can be parties now to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship with de jour states, Moors Nationals. Is citizens and representatives of the United States of America, republic. Is republic and republic disputes. But if there's no republic of the United States of America. Then there's no one for de jour Moors Nationals to have a dispute with. Because the United States of America Corporation or the United States Corporation is what you call plaintiff in error. What do I mean? They must be a party to a contract in order to enforce said contract. The parties must be known. Why is this important for the Moors to understand? Moors are looking for remedies. Moors got pain right now, they wanna fix this. If Moors wanna fix it, they need a state, cause that's international law. But more importantly. Moors can deal with the United States of America, not to be confused with the United States Corporations. Tell them to me, uh, excuse me. We're a republic. Where's your republic for the United States of America according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship? Oh, I forgot, you put on your record that you dissolved yourself in eighteen seventy one. That must be known, we're talking government, we're talking parties to a contract, what else are we talking about? Watch this, Tosh Free Bay, favorite word, status. Watch this. The United States of America Corporation, not to be confused with the United States, two separate entities. What is their status now? Status, standing state or condition, what's their condition? Corporation. Oh, you can't be a party to the contract, cause it's for republics. What else did they do? The legal relation of individuals to the rest of the community. What community am I talking about? Republican community versus corporation community. Treaty with peace and friendship, republican and republican governments. The United States of America, not to be confused, the United States is no longer a republic by their own records. What else happened? What else they do about status, their status about rights? And their duties, capacities, and their capacities which determine a person to a given class. What class are they? They're corporation, municipal corporation. What class is Moors with a state? Republic. Republic can only enforce treaties. Not corporations. So therefore, what do they do? They created, the United States of America created what? Incapacities for themselves. Their status is plaintiff in error. They have no judicial standup. In international law. As it relates to dealing with a republic, what's republic mean? You're dealing with. Human beings. With consanguine nationality and sovereignty. Versus dealing with another republic who also has a nationality. And a republic for human beings. The United States of America made all of its citizens civiliter mortis. Including those people they call themselves white people. All of their names in all capital letters. And they are all citizens of all caps. Capitus diminucio maxima states that are all corporations under municipality of eighteen seventy one. You must understand, Moors, Moors wanna fix this? Moors don't wanna go to jail no more, Moors don't wanna get pulled over by the cops no more? Moors wanna now enforce. Moors wanna now enforce counsel court? You want constant order of patient access? Create your state? And tell the colonists, excuse me. If you got a dispute with us. Put on the record your stats. Are you a republic? Yes or no? They cannot bring us suit. Watch this, Dred Scott. We learn about Dred Scott. Moors love talking about Dred Scott. And Dred Scott, the Supreme Court came out and said, Dred Scott. Was plaintiff in error because of his status. We're talking status. Dred Scott's status was wrong. What was his status? He wasn't claiming nationality. His last name was Scott. And he was stateless. And he came under the protection of the United States of America. He wasn't claiming the government. Okay, let's talk the United States of America. Guess what? The United States of America, not to be confused, the United States, guess what? They're Dred Scott. Why? Because of their status, their status is plaintiff in error. Cause they're a corporation, no longer a republic. They violated and breached their own constitution. That must be known moors. If moors wanna fix this, create a state. And call out the corporate states, they ask them, are you a party to the contract? Cause if you're not a party to the contract, United States of America, all caps. If you're not a party to the contract, United States, all caps. If you're not a party to the contract, U dot S dot. Or U S with no dots. They are plaintiff in error. That must be known moors. I'm trying to give everyone the answers to the test. You must understand that George Washington created a republic. And his own descendants came in, undermined George Washington. What are we talking about right now? We're talking status, about nationality. The United States of America don't have nationality no more, it's fiction. We're talking constitution. They don't have a constitution no more because they're a corporation. Or as it relates to moors, they're no longer the United States of America republic. So. They violate their constitution, their constitution, the only thing connecting them to make them part and parcel. To the moors. What else? They created a seal for the United States. Did we read that? They created a seal? They created a seal. Right here, seal. Have a seal. What do they do? Think about it moors. They created another government. And never went back to C D Muhammad's, the Muhammad's, the Muhammadians, the government of Morocco. To put the new name of United States. As an amendment to the treaty of peace and friendship as a new name. George Washington did it in eighteen seventeen eighty nine, he petitioned C D Muhammad. Hey man, we wanna change his name from articles of confederation to United States of America. But the senators of eighteen seventy one never went to the. The, to the sultans of eighteen seventy one said, hey man, we changed our name to United States. Formerly known as United States of America. You must understand what's happening right now moors. There is no United States of America republic. The United States of America is a Santa Claus. They're de facto, why? Because by fact, they are a government. Why? Listen. What is government? Government is not the building. Government is the people. The citizens of the United States still think the United States of America is still a government, and as long as they think it's a government. Then those criminals, those imposters continue to act like a de facto government, even though they're not de jour. Only people that can now bring them to the table and question them. On the status quo. Avement of jurisdiction, quote, warranto is who? Moors who have a state. And until then, the United States of America, not to be confused, the United States corporation gets to run a muck. As a corporation, not only in North America, but all around the world. And only people can get in their way. Is the parties to the contract. And that's the moors. Who have a state and have checked all these boxes to create that state. You can't be self-appointed nothing. No treaty can be withdrawn or suspended. Or terminated. Without first bringing it to court to have it dissolved. It's a, watch this, it's a bilateral treaty. Yes, the United States of America is de facto. They're still pretending like they're still a part of the treaty. But guess who else has been de facto? The moors. We've been non-existent, we're extinct according to their records. So both parties have been de facto, so they're both working outside the law of the contract. We're both outlaws, if this is the constitution, the treaties, we're both as parties working outside the contract. So therefore, it becomes what's called a moot point. But as soon as the moors start to put their states on the record with the UN and the United States of America corporation, guess what? De jour party just came to the table. And the de facto party, well, they're imposters. They gotta back away from the table. And tell the real United States of America republic to come to the table as a party because it's a cohabitating contract. So until, to answer your question specifically mother. Until we go to the UN, ICJ to say, hey, we wanna terminate this contract because the other party failed to show up. Default judgment. It must now be on the record through a, what's called a impartial competent court. Can counsel court say it as of right now? Yes. But the United States of America, not be confused, the United States is going to appeal it to ICJ. ICJ is gonna take, look at the record and say, excuse me, United States of America. Y'all been coming to ICJ, we've always known y'all been to the United States all this time, but there's nothing we can do about it to the moors. You go back and look at France versus the United States of America nineteen fifty two, the ICJ tells the United States of America straight up. Y'all can pretend like these treaties don't exist if you want to. But if you act like that, keep in mind, that means you don't have a treaty to stand on, which means your constitution is not assessed. To a treaty, which means you have no judicial standup to stand in Morocco. So they have to pretend as if they are still a de jour government. Just so they can stay in Morocco. So let's go back. We just hit the first sentence, Pennsylvania. Why did I go so deep into this? You must understand the reference points as it relates to thinking about this as being a government moor. Stop thinking as a moor, think as a elective issue of your government, how you will defend the capacities. And incapacities of your state when you have a dispute with a de facto state. That's why we're going through this. Okay, let's continue. Mother can read file of the house.
File of the House of Representatives, resolution number seventy five.
Continue.
Moors American Societies of Philadelphia and the use of their name.
Stop. What's wrong with this title? Well, first things first, what did we underscore? This, this resolution is already what you call void ad hici, void ad hici, why? It was void from the beginning, why? Pennsylvania is a corporation, not a party to the contract. That's number one. Why else is it void ad hici? What does the treaty say about how you deal with the colonists? Seventeen eighty six. You go down to article what? Twenty, moors love article twenty, well, let's enforce article twenty. In article twenty, does it say go to Philadelphia? No, it says what? If any of the citizens of the United States. Or any persons under their protection shall have had any disputes with each other or, the council shall decide between the parties. And whenever the council shall require any aid or assistance from our government, who's our government? Moroccan, Moroccan government. To enforce his decision, whose decision? A Moroccan government decision. It shall be immediately granted to him. Who's the him? Moroccan government him's the consul of Morocco. Keeping in mind during this time, France was consul as well, but moors have the original jurisdiction. So wait a minute. Why are we in Philadelphia talking to Philadelphian? So-called government. For municipal corporation, would a treaty already express how you deal with any dispute? You gotta go back to Moroccan government. Philadelphia can't make no decisions for moors. Only moors can make decisions for moors. Wait a minute. Some people say, well, it wasn't civil, it wasn't criminal. Okay, let's go back to the treaty. Peace and friendship, moors gotta learn this, we're talking government. So what article do you go to if in fact? It's just some type of indifference. Article twenty four, what does it say? Mother, if you can read that for me, please?
Article twenty four, if any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty. Peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest course. Until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement and until that application shall be rejected. No appeal shall be made to arms.
Stop. So what's happening in article twenty four? So the moors are talking to Philadelphia. So Philadelphia is de facto is a corporation. For whatever indifference, any differences dealt with. Automatically, no matter what, still go back to article twenty, which is the Moroccan government. You don't go to colonists to correct any applications. The colonists come to Moroccan governments to correct application. George Washington came to who? A Moroccan government to fix his application. Moors have to stop thinking you go to the United States for anything, but you know how the moors been going to the United States? Because we didn't have our own state. Cause we didn't have our own governments. So we're petitioning a colonist who's the tenant in our land, cause we didn't have our own government. Moors have to start understanding, when you form your government. You make decisions within your government for your own nationals or what you, their status you want them to be. When a columnist, columnist needs something from moors, they gotta petition moors. When moors want something from colonists, you send demands, D, man, why do you demand? That's not hyperbole. Why do you demand? Let's go back to article twenty two. If they have a mother reading, please?
Article twenty two, if an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear. The consul shall take possession of high effects.
His effects.
And if there shall be no counsel, the effect shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust. Until the party shall appear who has right to demand them. But if they're here to the person.
Their heir.
Their heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruptions. And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend agreeably. To that will as soon as the council shall declare the validity thereof. Validity thereof.
Okay, so counsel determines validity. We make demands. From the council, council of who? Moors, state government. Dealing with a de facto corporation, we make the demand, why? Watch this, why don't I have us read twenty two? The United States of America. Is according to their own laws, dead. They're dead on paper. The United States of America republic is dead on paper. Listen. If an American citizen shall die in our country. Who died? The United States of America republic. And no will shall appear, what's their will? They don't have a will. You know why they don't have a will? They never put on the record, when they changed the United States in eighteen seventy one. That was their opportunity, put on the record with the sultans that they had changed their government again. That would have been their will. They failed to do so. Okay, well, since they didn't do that, watch this. The consul shall take possession of their effects. Who's the consul? The de jour moors nationals. Take what effects? Anything the United States of America corporation. Or the United States corporation is, has possession of, cause they don't own nothing. Immediately goes to the consul who now. Deals with the validity. Of whatever will, what's the will? Their constitution. What about their constitution? They dissolve the United States of America republic. Created a new constitution called the United States Corporation, but it's municipal corporation. Never put on the record with moors. So it becomes void ad hici. Now eighteen seventy one, they changed themselves to United States. They don't go to the Sultan and change it on the record. Immediately becomes ex parte, meaning a unilateral decision, they did not put on the record with the other party. Which means it's what? Known and void. So anything they're doing through the municipal corporation is known and void, void ad hici. Void from the beginning, beginning what? Eighteen seventy one. Powerful stuff. But if moors cannot use it, unless they have a state. Because we're just the de facto of the United States of America, we don't have a state. Don't get me wrong, Eppa has a state. We're poised with full powers. That's true. Okay. So why are we reading article twenty two? Moors can make demands. When you look up the definition of moor. Fourth, fourth edition, Black Law Dictionary says what? Officer of the court summons. You summon. What does summon mean? Demand? We summon. Anybody as a party to contract with us. We just don't summon just anybody. But if you're in a contract. Moors nationals can summon. If you rent in someplace, your landlord can summon. Why? Cause he has their ownership of the property, colonizer. But based upon this illustration, moors must start understanding the concept of government. This is powerful stuff moors. Why am I expressing this? Moors claim they wanna fix it. You wanna fix it, then the first thing you gotta do is, is fix what? Your status. That's the truth. If you are a moors national, you have status. But guess what? If you are a, if so, you're a moors subject, that's a status too. What's status? Citizen of the United States. What else is status? Moors protege. That's a status, status of what? Citizen of the United States. If you're not a moors national, you can't enforce contracts, you can't enforce treaties, which means you are de facto. No more than the United States. Moors gotta stop pointing fingers at the colonists. We must correct our own status. I'm gonna edify the good brother Tosh to be bent. He's been telling us for years, it's our status. He's been telling us for years, we need a nation state. He's been telling us for years, it's status. He's been telling us for years, we need to come together and organize. And do what? Study law and history. Where do we study? Law and history. Timelines. To resolution seventy five. Go ahead and read it mother.
Many sons and daughters of that, of that proud and handsome race which inspired the. Architecture, architecture.
Okay, that's, one more time, archi-structure.
Architecture.
Okay, let's start from which inspired the architecture.
Which inspired the artee-structure.
Arquee.
Architecture.
Let's start again, which inspired?
Which inspired the architecture of northern Africa and carrying to Spain. The influence of its artistic temperament have become citizens of this nation.
Stop, thank you, mother, watch this. This is what you call void ab initio. Why is it void ab initio? Because first things first. Watch this. My sons and daughters of that proud and handsome race which inspired their architect. Architecture of northern Africa and carried it to Spain, the influence of its arti-. Artistic temperament. Have become citizens of this nation, see, it's contagious. What happened? Moors can't become citizens. Of another nation. Why not? Wait a minute, I thought the international community said you have a right to self-determination, yeah, you do. But guess what? Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Well, watch this. Treaty of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Moors can't just make a unilateral decision to be citizens, they must come back to their Moroccan government. To consent to the laws of the Moroccan government or get consent to become, to remain a naturalized citizen. Article fifteen, eighteen eighty, Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land. Second paragraph, mother.
In the city of Philadelphia, there exists a Moorish American society made up of Moors who, who have found here. The end of their quest for a home and of the children of those who. Jer- journey here from the plains of Morocco.
Stop, first things first. In the city of Philadelphia. Wait a minute, is that? Is that Morocco? No, Philadelphia is a corporation jurisdiction, so wrong venue, void ab initio. Plains of an error. There exists a Moorish American society, what's a Moorish American so- so- society? Society means what? That's just a group, organization. Incorporated or not incorporated, but it's not a government. Can't make decisions on behalf of Moors, only elected officials have the sovereign right through their state capacity to make decisions. For Moorish nationals. Continuing. Made up of Moors who found here the end of their quest. No, the end of your quest is when you. Come back to Article fifteen of Treaty of eighteen eighty to your government, that's your quest. End of the children of those who journeyed here from the plains of Morocco, they didn't have to journey far, they just crossed the street. Because they were already in Morocco. Second paragraph is void ab initio. Patriots and defendants in error. Third, third paragraph, mother, please.
This society has done much to bring about a thorough absor- absorption. By these people of those principles which are necessary to make them good American citizens.
So this is redundant. First things first. The word citizen does not exist in Moroccan law. As soon as any Moor wants to subscribe to be a naturalized, number one, that's treason. Number two, it's a breach of the treaty because you gotta get permission from a Moroccan government. And last but not least, on the side of Philadelphia, they're breaching the contract too. Because they did not have the Republican power. And if there was even a Republican state, they had to get to counsel Article twenty in order to deal with any dispute. Or go to Article twenty-four to deal with a difference of application. Article three is void ab initio. Have no judicial stand by in law. Okay, continue, mother.
The Moorish Americans have since being here missed the use of the titles and names and annexations. That were so familiar at home and which are used in accordance with the doctrines of the religious faith. To which they are inher- inherent, therefore be it.
Okay, watch this. The Moorish Americans have since being here. Where's the here? They're saying the Moors are now in the jurisdiction of Philadelphia Corporation. That they were not in Morocco at the time, they're talking jurisdiction, were they talking about status? Missed the use of the titles, the name annexation, so they're admitting, the United States is admitting on the record, they annexed our titles. That were so familiar at home, what home? Morocco, but they're saying these Moors are in the jurisdiction of Philadelphia Corporation. So start from, uh. I'll start from the top. The Moorish Americans have since being here missed, missed the use of the titles and name annexation that were so familiar at home. And which are used in accordance with the doctrines of the religious faith to which they are inherent, there, therefore be it. Wait a minute. So they're saying these Moors could keep their last name as long as it was assessed to religion and not about nationality. Or the proper status of being a Moor. They're saying you're a Moor with a face on, under a religious status, has nothing to do with a political status. It's religion. Religion is not classified under any of these boxes. So Moors, under this article. Saying they can keep, keep their last names only under a religious status. Five oh one C three, corporation status. This is void ab initio because your last name assessed to your nationality, your title of your last name is assessed to your nationality. And your nationality cannot be taken away from you. Last paragraph, mother.
Resolve that this house commends the Moorish American Society of Philadelphia for the efficient service it has rendered. The nation in bringing about a speedy and thorough Americanization of these former Moors. And that in accordance with the fullest right of religious independence guaranteed every citizen. We recognize also the right of these people to use the names. Affixes. Il, al, ali, or bay. Or any other prefix or suffix. To which they have. Here to for been accustomed to use or which they may hereafter acquire the right, the right to use.
So therefore they can use their names as long as they follow the Fourteenth Amendment. Citizen, denizen, subject. Watch this. Resolve that this house commends the Moors, they commend them. Commend them for what? Let's find out. That the Moorish American Society, that their little group, corporation or incorporated. Of the Philadelphia for the efficient service it has rendered the nation. And bringing about a speedy and thorough Americanization. Wait a minute, what nation? They're saying that these Moors rendered to the nation of the United States of America. They surrendered. They became proteges. And bringing about a speedy and thorough Americanization of these former Moors, wait a minute. What does American nation mean? American nation, Americanization means. Denos- denosination. Of your nationality, which is what? Naturalization. Denationalize yourself. You became an expatriate of your own country. They literally say former Moors. How can you be a former Moor? Your constituent didn't change. That means they didn't change the Moor's status, the Moors changed their own status, now keep in mind, this is nineteen thirty-three. What happened in nineteen twenty-nine? Noble Dua Ali gets assassinated. July twentieth nineteen twenty-nine. Why? Because he's undermining all the banking. He's undermining the corporations. And making a claim to Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. So they assassinate Noble Dua Ali July twentieth nineteen twenty-nine, and here comes some Moors. Doing the very thing that Noble Dua Ali was trying to pull us out of the jurisdiction of the United States Corporation. These Moors go back into the jurisdiction and claim a protectorate status. But guess what? They got every right to do that under self-determination, however. That's a breach of contract of the Treaty of eighteen eighty. What else did we take away from this document? Continue to read. Of these former Moors and that in accordance with the fullest right of religious independence, did they say they had a right to their nationality no more? Nope. You can claim religion all day, you can be a pastor, a priest, bishop, rabbi, minister. Have your five oh one C three, have any. But don't talk about that nationality no more. You gotta understand what's going on during this time. Dwight D Eisenhower needed some help. He got it from some conversals. That's the truth. But what's the underscore here? Resolution seventy-five. Is void ab initio. Because it's repugnant. To the Constitution of the United States of America, because Philadelphia is a corporation. And it's repugnant to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Eighteen thirty-six. Because everything has to dealt, be dealt with with a Moroccan government. Whether it's a dis-sil, criminal, or difference of application. It's repugnant to the Treaty of eighteen eighty because you gotta come back to Morocco. To be a citizen and remain a naturalized citizen. So this document. Is void ab initio. It never had any judicial standing whatsoever as it relates to international law. So what is my point? Moors used to think this was remedy. If anything, it was contrary to the truth. It was de facto. So what's the remedy? If Moors want true remedy. Then we must come back to a state. Until then, we are stateless people. I am with that, Islam.